This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you. We're joined by member Brian Oviat, we're member Joe Metzen, and then Chairman Larry Potts. And so you and Larry are participating on the phone, it appears?
Well, I can do the camera.
Yeah, yeah. So, all right, I am going to call the special meeting of the Heritage Preservation Commission to order. It is Tuesday, April 6th. Notice of the special meeting has been posted as required in statute. It is 5:38 PM. We do have a quorum present with members Oviat, Metzen, joining us on video, and members Remo, I can't remember your last name.
Alexandri.
Alexandri, thank you. I should have wrote that down. And Chairman Potts participating on the phone. So a quorum four has been established. We're also joined by Eric Orin from Orin Instruments. Before I ask for approval of the agenda, I need to administer the oath of office to Remo. So Remo, if you want to repeat after me. I, Remo Alexandri.
I, Remo Alexandri.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States.
And that of the state of Minnesota.
And that of the state of Minnesota.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
Of a Heritage Preservation Commission member.
As a Heritage Preservation Commission member.
In and for the city of St. Peter, Minnesota.
In.
I'll slow down. In and for the city of St. Peter, Minnesota.
And in for the city of St. Peter, Minnesota.
To which office I've been appointed.
Sorry, broke.
To which office I have been appointed.
To which office I have been appointed.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
The best of my judgment and ability.
And we will note that you took the oath of office verbally, because we're not meeting in person. So with that done, I would ask, would anyone move approval of the agenda as submitted?
I'd move approval.
We have a motion by Potts. Is there a second to that?
Second by Metzen.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
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 And I believe we did election of officers at the last meeting. Sorry about that. You have the minutes of the January 26, 2021 meeting. Are there any noted corrections? Or would anyone move approval?
I'd move approval.
We have a motion by Potts. Is there a second?
Oviat seconds.
We have a second by Oviat. All in favor of approval of the minutes as submitted, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. We have no unfinished business before the commission. New business. I apologize. A couple hours after I sent the email canceling the last meeting, I got a demolition permit. And it just had to be one that needed your review. It couldn't have been out on the edge of town or anything. They already taken out the asbestos. They've already removed the lead. And so they were looking to actually demo this week, that last week, actually, at the end of the week. And so I told them that it necessitated your review, and I appreciate your willingness to accommodate that. So we can get, hopefully get that thing out of town. But you're asked to comment on the historic value, if you will, of that structure, and its impact upon the remaining properties within the district. And I'll be short and sweet. It's an inappropriate use, utilizing an inappropriate design, utilizing inappropriate materials of an inappropriate scale. I have no reservation in suggesting that it has no historic merit, other than it's been occupying a site. Now, I'm going to go through and ask if anyone has any questions, or if anyone just wants to make a motion to authorize the demo. Let me go. Secondly, I believe it would have a positive impact upon the remaining properties in the district as it detracts from the integrity of the district as it is now. So I'm going to go through and ask if there's comments, questions, if anyone wants to make a motion. And I'll start with Chairman Potts.
So there's something about this being transferred to the Arts Council or something like that?
Yep, the Arts Center of St. Peter has acquired it. And they're just still going to use it right now for an open courtyard.
Okay.
At some point. Oh, go ahead, Chairman.
So maintenance and upkeep would be guaranteed. You know, we don't want that to turn into a field of any kind, you know what I'm saying?
Right. And knowing the Arts Center and the pride that they take in their programming and properties, I don't have reservations that it would become miskept or eyesore. They are intending to establish a turf, and it will be a low-maintenance turf. So it's a slow-growing, not not slow to get established, but it doesn't grow really fast during the season. So you don't necessarily have to mow it, but they will mow it as appropriate.
Yeah, fine.
If I can just finish. At some point, they may come to you and seek approval to put in a gazebo, a small gazebo, or a little picnic shelter, or something of that nature. But they realize that any of those improvements would be subject to your review and approval. So.
Okay, now that makes me glad I asked the question, because it's good to have an idea about the intended use.
Yeah, the Capitol Room was actually, they were the original owners, and they were thinking about maybe even putting it an outside where they could have Capitol Room events, you know, as building a bar outside. But evidently, their plans have changed, and the property's been acquired by the Arts Center. So.
Okay, okay, good.
Anything else, Larry?
No.
Okay, Brian, you want to go ahead? Any questions, comments?
Yeah, I'd like to, being that it's in the historic district, has there been any studies as into the history of the building? So we don't go forth tearing down something that we would regret? Have they done any diligence?
Yeah, as I said, the earliest building permit I can find from 1947. And I'm not aware of any special historic events or persons. I said earlier, Barb Luker from City Administrator Prattkey's office, her grandpa lived there. But I can't find it. Really has an incomplete building record, if you will. But no, I haven't asked Bob Sandine or anyone at the Historic Society to do any research.
Okay, so no, we don't know the history of this building, then?
We don't know, we don't, yeah, we don't know what events might have taken place. You know, I just, yeah, I guess we don't.
Okay. I've done a little research myself, but I'm hesitant without a, some kind of background to it, a little bit of a study. I'd hate to tear down, maybe it's the oldest building in St. Peter for all we know. Do we know, do we know that or not know that?
Like I said, the building permit I could find was from 1947. It is obviously, I believe, been added on since that time. There's some, you know, brochures from buildings. Can't remember what the name was, but it'd be like the Sears Building, where you could buy it in parts and put it together. But that was from later on. That was from after 47. So. Yeah, I guess we haven't looked into what may have happened there, or who may have resided there.
Or when it, we don't know when it was built then necessarily either.
Like I said, it showed 1947 in our building files.
It doesn't look older than mid-century.
Yeah, it's got, it has modern surfacing on it, so it's hard to know what might be under that.
Correct.
It's, geez, I hadn't thought of that, Brian.
Yeah, and you know what? I'll share what I've, somebody reached out to me last fall when this process was beginning, and I did some research myself. I do believe that it started life as a, I think it was a lean-to to the building next door. I can't confirm that. I've gone through photographs and and I've gone through Sanborn maps on my own, through happenstance, it made it to this meeting. But nobody at the Arts Center has done any due diligence on it, then it sounds like. So we don't know what we have on our hands.
Did you, Brian, do you have access to the fire insurance maps from the 1880s?
Yeah, I sure do.
They may show a footprint of the building there.
Yeah, yeah, I do. I I don't believe, the closest I could come up with, like I said, it was more of a lean-to structure, which would be the rear structure. I don't believe that the whole building was built as it stands at one time. I'm sure there's been multiple additions, just like any other historic structure. But that's as far as I've gotten. Like I said, I don't, I don't have anything further back. I know that the building, I've tried to research building permits and whatnot, and the city has stuff going back a ways, but at some point it stops. I've tried pulling early building permits, and nothing has come up. And I'm guessing some of that maybe is tornado-related or whatnot. But I guess it's incomplete at this point, the history of the building, you know. This is an old town. There could be old buildings here in plain sight. So that, that's where I'm at. I'm guess I'm, I'm 50/50 at this point.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Brian?
No, that's it.
Joe?
No, nothing else.
Remo?
Nothing special. I drove by the property, by the way. I took a look at what it looked like. And I don't see, I don't have any objections to demolition and renovation or rebuilding of the property as stated.
Thank you. Well, you know, Brian is not wrong. You know, there is a building on Walnut, and it's got the stucco exterior, and right now, there's a significant crack in the front of it. My understanding is there's a 1860s or so brick building underneath of that.
It's 1850s, Russ.
1850s. So you see, I've only got the anecdotal talking to do.
So it was built as three stories. It was built as a commercial hotel to bring visitors in while they're trying to sell lots in St. Peter back in the capital fiasco days. So, mid-1850s. So that is a gem and of a building.
Yeah, I'd like to see it without, you know, the stucco on covering it up and.
Yeah, it's no different than vinyl siding.
So, gentlemen, what would you like to do?
I'd like to make a motion.
Feel free.
That we approve the plans to demolish the building and wish the owners luck. Well, that last part doesn't have to be there, but you know what I mean.
Gotcha. Would there be a second to the motion?
I second the motion, Metzen.
We have a motion and a second. Now, it's appropriate to go around to have discussion on the motion, and this time I'll start with Brian.
Nay.
This is just discussion before we vote.
Oh, I think, yeah, I think due to the lack of due diligence on the part of the owner of a building in the historic district, like I said, I'm leaning towards no.
Very well. Joe, any questions or comments?
Um, I don't think so. It doesn't seem that like it has historic significance.
Remo?
That's all.
I agree with Joseph. No comment.
Okay, and Mr. Potts?
Well, it's, you know, it's appearances entirely like that of a crummy building that's out of place. And I suppose the foundation might be of historic interest, but it's hard for me to see that that has much value per se. If we were talking about a two-story building here that had a brick facade, or, you know, like the Embassy Bar had stone on it, something like that. Or even if it were a one-story with stone, that would be something else. But what we've got is something that looks kind of like a chicken coop with modern siding on it. I just don't sense the strong historical value. So I think I'm going to support my own motion.
Very good. I'll ask one more. Does anyone have anything else? If you do, we can just turn on your microphone.
Yeah, it doesn't seem to be a situation like that Walnut Street building, where you can see there's old brick behind there. I think Larry said it well. It appears to be, it's a non-conforming structure from, yeah, that doesn't really belong there.
Okay, anyone else? Hearing no one, I will call the roll, and I will start with Member Metzen.
Aye.
Member Alexandri.
Aye.
Member Potts, or Potts, rather.
Fine, aye.
Member Oviat.
Nay.
Motion passes on a three-to-one vote. The next item for business is, Eric came in the same day I was writing up the other packet. So Eric Orin is joining us from Orin Instruments. Eric is relocating his business from Belgrade Avenue in North Mankato to the right-side storefront in the Four Seasons Mall. Of course, Eric would like to establish some signage to denote his location. And I will say, Eric and I were talking before the meeting, and I misconstrued his intent. And he is essentially looking for one or the other of the signs, not both. And so with that said, the one I would recommend would be the projecting sign. It does have a square metal frame painted black. Right now, it is manufactured to fit on a corner of a building, but with some minor alterations, basically to cut one leg and then weld it back on in the other direction. It would be appropriate for, well, you could place it flat on a flat wall. You had the dimensions in your packet. It has been professionally manufactured. I will say that some things have happened at the Four Seasons Mall since, at one point, the HVC said that the tenants, as they were changing so frequently, they could put up a sign as long as it met a specific dimension, length and width, and it utilized a specific font, and it was of only two colors, not including neons. And so Eric has removed the last couple signs, because those owners have been gone quite a bit. Since that time, they've reduced the number of rentable spaces in the building. So instead of having maybe six to eight tenants, I think there's four storefronts. So I think the signage could be more easily managed. I will also say that I was sharing, and Judy were here, but Eric's lease then authorizes him to make certain leasehold improvements to the front of the building. And we're talking, we're talking modest improvements. We're not talking the entire, you know, the entire one that was proposed before. But I told Eric, right now, he's entitled to put up marine plywood and paint it that exact same green color as a repair. But alterations Eric understands would come to you folks, and him and I'll have some more discussions about that. See if I can find in my packet. This is the 30-by-40-inch sign. Eric had done a depiction of the signage on the building. The signage would be lower, though. It would be within that marine plywood. It wouldn't obscure the windows. It might be even more appropriate to move it almost to the right side of the storefront. But first thing I'm going to do, gentlemen, is open it up to Eric, and he can advocate on his behalf. And then we'll open it up to the commissions for questions or comments. And Eric, go ahead. Thank you for joining us, and thank you for using St. Peter.
Thanks for having me. Yeah, I think that the, because of the very flat nature of the building, that there's no awnings or anything there. The best sign that I would advocate for would be the one that projects out into space that you can see from both sides. If there's a possibility to use the other one on the front as well, that's, yeah, I don't, you know, that might work. But I'm more concerned about getting the other one up so that people can see it coming and going on 169. Does that make sense?
Well, we're going to open it up, and we'll hear from the commissioner, if you're all right, or if you don't have anything else to add.
I'm good.
Okay, we're going to start with Remo. Any questions for Eric or comments?
Well, I would have loved to ask some questions, but I did not receive the packet. Obviously, I'm a new member. Probably I'm not hailing list yet. So I, no idea. So I probably should abstain from this round of.
I'm sorry about that. I thought for sure we sent you one in the email, but Cindy said we didn't have you on the list. I apologize. But.
Oh, okay. Did you send something today, or like?
No, I don't know when they got the packet. I think it was like late end of last week, Wednesday, Thursday, and we emailed them out.
I don't believe I have received that specific email.
Yep, one thing we'll do, Remo, if you can call our office tomorrow. We have instances where our emails are identified as a threat, and they get kind of kicked out. And emails that come in to us, we have one of the highest security systems, because we don't have, probably a day that goes by where someone doesn't make a ransomware attack on us. And we don't dare lose all of our computer information. So we have a very high security system. Our system might be considering your system to be a threat, but there's ways that our IT guy can help figure that out. So if you'd call Cindy tomorrow sometime, we'll see if we can get some checking on that.
I will do that.
And Cindy can't comment, because she doesn't have a microphone or a camera on her computer. She can hear us and see us, but she's not able to participate. So.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, any comments, questions?
Well, I think it's a worthy project, and I like the sign that is out in the walkway. And I think that visibility from the highway is good. It's a good idea. It'll help his business, I think. The sign is, I like the design and everything. I note that there are other signs like this down on the avenue, specifically the building next door to all of this. You can see the, you know, the flower shop there and with a sign that stands out from the building. I think it's great. So I like that. I have a comment about the facade of that Four Seasons Mall. I mean, it is horrible. And it needs to change, and I don't know what the mechanism is to get that cleaned up. But that is no business being on Minnesota Avenue in St. Peter. It's an eyesore. If it would take some sort of city intervention to get the owner to clean that up and replace the rotting wood, I mean, it's horrible.
Yep, yep. Chairman, if you will, I'll let Eric comment on the contents of his lease and what he perhaps is intending loosely. I know he doesn't have his plans finalized or anything.
Yeah, my lease stipulates that I provide the labor to, and Carl provides the materials before the end of September to make a change there. So I'm not exactly sure what he's planning. I don't know if it's marine plywood. I don't know if it's some kind of siding. And he hasn't contacted me as of yet, and I hear from other people that Carl has a hard time talking to anybody. So I'll try and find out through the building, there, the maintenance guy in the building, what, when he knows something from Carl, what the plan is. And hopefully, it fits in with what he's already talked about with you, and we'll get that, the front to be changed before the end of summer.
Great. I sure hope things get better, because it's horrible. And we're looking at the picture. Sorry you can't see this, Remo, but if you were able to, there's rotting wood by the entrance down by the sidewalk. And this is, this is not appropriate at all for a city's main street. I just think it's horrible. And remember, the owner here is the one who sought our approval of the siding on the south side of that building to repair the damage from the tornado. And that project seems to have simply disappeared from his line, his horizon. So that building has a lot of trouble. And it's not Eric's fault. Please, don't misunderstand me. But I hope with some pressure, we can get some changes made there to make it look better.
Yep. Chairman, I'll reiterate once again, you know, as we've talked about this building, the city, we asked the council at one point to give us the authority to order certain improvements or repairs. It's called a minimum maintenance of effort. The city of Fairbowl has one. And anything from fixture ripped awning, replace that broken window. Tuck point this brick that's beginning to fail. And they somewhat seem to have community support within the building owners, because they, you know, they may send out 60 letters, and they have to go to bat or go to the mat with a couple of them. And the St. Peter City Council was not willing to grant that authority. In Fairbowl, it's actually turned that some people are thankful. Oh, thank you. I didn't notice that. I'll get on it. I want to maintain my building, not necessarily for its historic merit, but for its value and the equity that they're trying to build into it. So we don't have any authority until it would come to the point where it would be a violation of the building code, like the old building that was at the Mom and Pop site, where it becomes an imminent public health threat due to the threat of collapse. Now, I'd hate, and I know the council would hate, well, I believe the council. I don't speak for them, obviously. But no one wants to see that building go into worse shape. But when we wake up next Tuesday, it's going to be in worse shape.
Yeah. Well, I wonder if the Chamber of Commerce could do something like raise some funds to take care of it. It's just, the owner appears to have no interest in keeping it up. That's all I'm saying there. I wish there were a way to do that.
Thank you. Anything else, Chairman?
No.
Okay, Brian, any comments?
Yeah, first of all, welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet. I think you're going to be a great asset to the community. I like the sign. I like the idea of the projecting sign. I think it's a classic image. It'll fit in well down there. I'll echo Larry's concerns. I think, I'll just speak for myself. Yeah, it's bad. Hopefully, we can make some progress there. I don't, I don't think that, I don't know if there's any mechanism for, again, for us approving or not approving based on, you know, it's rundown nature, let's call it. But as far as the sign goes, yeah, I think it'll be great. And I think, like I said, a good fit for the community. So I'll just leave it there.
Thank you, Brian. Joe, comments, questions?
I like the sign. It's interesting, and it's tasteful.
Very good. Would anyone move approval of the installation of the signage?
Oviat makes a noise.
Well, I'm going to go, motion by Oviat, second by Metzen. And any other comments? I'll just say, turn on your microphone if you have anything to discuss, subject to the motion. Expecting none, I will call the roll, and I'll start with Member Alexandri.
I respectfully abstain.
That's very fine, Remo. Thank you. Chairman Potts?
Aye.
Member Oviat?
Aye.
Member Metzen?
Aye.
Motion carried on the three, well, motion carried. I don't have anything else for the good of the cause. Again, thank you very much for agreeing to join us tonight at the special meeting. We'll intend, unless you hear differently, that we'll meet the last Tuesday of the month as well. I prepared the 2020 annual report, and I remember, those of you may remember the 2019 report. It's basically just, this is what we did at the meeting. We approved this sign for this building. We reviewed the fire station and determined that it is an asset that should be maintained upon the construction of the new one. So I'll be distributing a copy of this with the next agenda packet. So.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Potts?
A motion by, I'm going to give Joe the benefit this time, because he got seconded last time. Motion by Metzen, second by Potts to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
General, we're adjourned until the end of the month. Thank you again. General, we're adjourned until the end of the month. Thank you again for your time. Eric, thank you for joining us and for your, your planned investment in our community.
All right. Thank you very much.
Cindy, if you stop the recording, please.
Thanks for attending. You, uh, I wish you the best of luck there.
Thanks. Stop in some time, all of you.
Okay, great. And, uh, Remo, welcome to the group. Uh, glad to have you on board. And look forward to meeting you in real life. Uh, maybe by summertime, we can have some live meetings. Who knows?
Well, maybe we can meet outside and each set at our own picnic table.
Uh, yeah.
So, thanks you. Have a great evening, guys.
Thanks very much, Russ.
Thank you.